It looks pretty green. Okay, if everybody's ready to go, I'll call the order, the Tiverton Town Council meeting of Monday, April 27. And John has our flag. Excellent. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. To the Republic. Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you like to call the roll?
Counselor Driggs.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor DiMedeers. Counselor Hilton. Counselors are all present, and we have Administrator Carter and Solicitor Marcello and Deputy Clerk.
As well as Treasurer Denise Saret.
Yes.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi Denise. Oh, there we go. Joe has removed his mask and we see his quarantine beard that he's growing. Very nice, Joe.
I thought we had to wear a mask. That's why I had it on.
Excellent. I don't think that's the mask they meant, but.
Okay.
Good for a chuckle. All right, we'll start right away with the consent agenda. Item A, Approval of Town Council Minutes, the April 13, 2020 Regular Meeting. Item B, Acknowledged Receipt of Reports. Number one, Police and Fire Department Overtime Reports, March 2020. Number two, Department Monthly Reports, March 2020. Number three, Treasurer Denise Saret, March Budget and Revenue Reports. Item C, Acknowledged Receipt of Correspondence. Number one, Town of Barrington Resolution in Support of Legislation to Establish Ocean State Climate Adaptation and Resilience Funds. Number two, Town of Barrington Resolution in Support of H 7264 and S 2130 Large Capacity Feeding Device Ban Act of 2020. Number three, the D E M Public Notice Dredge Permit for Block Island Harbor of Refuge. Would any counselor like to remove any item from the consent agenda? Counselor Driggs?
I would.
Which I just.
Oh, I'm sorry. B three, Denise Saret's report. I just have a question.
B three. Counselor Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item B three.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Okay. Roll call vote then. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
What? I'm sorry.
We're voting on the rest of the consent agenda.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor DiMedeers?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Nancy, you had B three?
Yes, I just had a question Denise, on the third-party billing. I know that the language was going to be changed and continued to May 11th, but currently it doesn't show any revenue from the third-party billing. And I'm just not sure, is that, once, how does that work? Once we align the contract language to what we decided and continued to May 11th. But are we still collecting third-party billing? I'm not sure what's going on right now.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. As I understand it, they have started billing at the rates that we currently have published. And the good news is, we've collected actual to date at this point $315,000. So we had a huge influx over the last week of billing revenue.
Okay.
The report that you see as of March 31st doesn't reflect that because it all came in in April. But you would see it if you had a chance to look at the other report that I think we're going to discuss later about projected revenue. You'd see some notation on there. All right. So they are billing.
Great. Okay, thank you. That was my question.
In that case, may I have a motion to approve B three on the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Counselor Edwards?
Oh, yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor DiMedeers?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Then on to public comments, and we do have one public comment, which with regard to Town Farm, and I actually am planning later on in the agenda to ask you all to amend the agenda so that Stu Gilfillan can join us for a minute, and as that comment relates to that, I think I'll defer it to then, if that's okay.
Madam President, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just a reminder to the council members, there may be people listening on the phone who don't have access to this. So when you make a motion, or please just announce your name, or when you're speaking, before you speak, please state your names. Can hear and know who's talking.
Thank you, Mike. We don't have any public hearings today, but we do have some appointments. All of these are reappointments, and they're all for boards or commissions that have multiple vacancies. I do believe that Madam Clerk has said that all of these positions have been advertised as well?
Yes. Yes, the advertisement was so.
Okay. So I do have a question for the solicitor. Since these are reappointments, and we have no other applicants, and we have plenty of vacancies, we sometimes waive our policy of waiting till the next meeting to do appointments. So could we vote to waive the policy for all four sets of these at once, if we so desired?
Michael Marcello, yes.
Okay. In that case, do I have a motion to waive our policy regarding appointments and reappointments for items A, B, C, and D?
Joe Perry, I'll make that motion.
Second. John Edwards.
Okay.
I have one question, if I could ask?
Yes, Nancy.
Clear, I gather Nancy Mallow advertised. Am I to assume that no, these were the only respondents to the ad?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The town clerk is verifying that there were no other applications other than these. So there's a motion and a second to waive the policy. Counselor DiMedeers? Denise?
Which Denise?
Denise?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. In that case, for open space, it's a nine-member board with three-year terms. There are five vacancies right now. We have two requests for reappointment. The first is Jean-Paul Fossey requesting reappointment to expire April 15, 2023, and Gail Lawrence requesting reappointment again to expire April 15, 2023. Do any counselors have any comments or questions, or is there a motion? Yes.
I'll make a motion. Joe Perry? I'll make a motion. We reappoint Jean-Paul Fossey, 65 Bobbin Hill Road, and Gail Lawrence, 108 Long Caster Way, to the Open Space Commission for the three-year term to expire on 4/15/2023.
John Edwards, second.
There's a motion and a second. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor DiMedeers?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes. On item B, the Conservation Commission, a seven-member board, three-year terms. There are four vacancies, and there are two applicants for reappointment. The first is Thomas Ramatowski, requesting reappointment again expiring 4/15/2023, and Elizabeth Cottrell, requesting reappointment who expire the same, 4/15/2023. Are there any comments or questions from council, or do I have a motion?
I'll move. I'll move to appoint Thomas Ramatowski, 17 Boardon Road, for the Conservation Commission, and Elizabeth Cottrell, 1696 Fish Road.
Second. Joe Perry.
Conservation Commission expires 4/15/2023.
Okay, there's.
I'll second the second part of that.
And a second by Joe Perry. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor DiMedeers?
Yes.
And I'm a yes too. Okay, and finally, or not finally, we've got two more to go. Item C, the Cemetery Commission, which is a five-member board, three-year terms. There are two vacancies, one request for reappointment, Robert Sedoma, reappointment expiring 4/15/2023.
Madam President?
Yes, John.
John Edwards, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Robert Sedoma, 19 Baby Ave, for the Cemetery Commission, term to expire, three-year term to expire, 4/15/2023.
Joe Perry, second.
There's a motion and a second. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor DiMedeers?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And now finally, the Historical Cemeteries Commission, it's a five-member board, three-year terms. There are three vacancies, one request for reappointment, Robert Martin expires 4/15/2023.
Madam President?
Yes, John.
Counselor Edwards, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Robert Martin, 313 Neck Road, to the Historical Cemeteries Commission for a three-year term to expire 4/15/2023.
There's a motion and a second from Nancy Driggs. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor DiMedeers?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Congratulations to all of our reappointees, and thank you very much for volunteering to serve. Moving on to general business, under item A, we have Police Chief Jones' Approval of Budget Transfers. And there are four of them, from accounts 3330-7100 Code Red to 3330-6667 Operations for 2500. From account 3330-6928 Education Seminar to 3330-6648 Auto for $1,000. From account 3330-6748 Software to 3330-6648 Auto, again for $1,000. And finally, from 3330-5498 In-Service Training to 3330-6648 Auto for $1,500. And I'll defer to the Town Administrator if he'd like to comment on these transfers.
The, just the first part of it is related to the COVID expenditures for PPE that we're acquiring. So we needed an account to actually support that, and we'll wind up transferring that out once it gets reimbursed. And cleaning and sanitizing the vehicles and the tires that were needed. I think there are reasonable adjustments that needed to be made.
Chris?
Oh, go ahead, Denise.
Um, did you say we're buying tires with this? Because we have a tires account.
I believe we said he needed to purchase new tires for the SUVs.
All right, because I'm curious, because we do have a tires account in the budget.
We do, but you may not have enough money on it.
Well, no, I'm just curious, because a lot of these vehicles are brand-new. So I'm curious on if we spent the tires account.
I'm looking at it right now.
Chris?
He's got some money left in it, but I'm not sure why he's.
Me. Me, the crack.
Yes.
While you're looking, I'm just Nancy Driggs, I'm just asking, because I was going to raise the same issue. The couple of requests for the sanitizing, anything to do with COVID tea, he will get reimbursement, correct?
We believe that that will be reimbursed, we believe. There are guidelines for that, and they do fall within the guidelines. I'll double-check on the tires.
He has put, excuse me.
Denise Saret?
If I'm reading this correctly, he is putting the money into the auto. He just called it auto, but it is the tires, parts, and maintenance account. 6648?
Yes.
Yes. He's calling it auto, but it's actually called tires, parts, and maintenance.
Money into.
I think it's almost like, this is Donna, there's almost this two tire accounts that I can see. There's 6648, and then there's 67611. Why are there two?
I believe he's putting the 6648. No, 6748.
To be honest with you, Donna, I think it's a labeling. He uses for the tires, the 6648. 7611 is fuel.
Because he only has 300 dollars left in as of March 31st. That's why he needed. Yeah, he has $399 sitting in it as of March 31st, and there would no way cover the cost of tires for the SUVs.
But there's six, almost $17,000 in the 7611, which also says tires.
Danny, you're right. Counselor Cook is right. This is Denise Saret.
Yes, I know.
7611 is the fuel account. It probably should be renamed. So the $17,000 is in the fuel account.
Okay, so.
I actually think it's just the name of the account that's been that name forever.
Yeah, it's probably an issue that needs to be cleaned up.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just sort of looking at, and it took me a minute to find my piece of paperwork. They're putting it in auto. It's just the request to support the cleaning and sanitation of the frontline cruisers, which are operated by multiple users, and purchases new tires for the new Ford SUVs. So I'm not.
Sort of combining two things there.
Sure about the new tires, but. But, because I don't know when those SUVs came online, so I don't know.
I don't know how many we have, or that's another whole process. Everyone got to you, is looking at our assets. But if he needs tires, I'd rather have him buy tires instead of having an issue with a vehicle, because we had an issue many years ago that cost us a lot of money.
Yep.
So what are we using it for? I get the impression, is it for an auto, or is it for the cleanup?
They're both.
I think it's a little bit of, I think it's a little bit of both. I mean, they do have to, I do know this. You know, as they transport people or pick up people in cruisers, or even if they have multiple staff driving cruisers, now all of a sudden, you know, you've got to sanitize these cruisers on a regular basis, because you can't take the chance that somebody's going to get sick. And I do think those things are ultimately will submit for reimbursement, but it's an expense that we've never had before.
Okay, my question is, is that I would think that you would have to be really careful when you're asking for this money to be reimbursed for the COVID-19 or CARE Act. So if you're putting auto, though, when it should be the cleaning of COVID, you know, 1,000 from something, and then it's going into another account. Shouldn't it be, shouldn't you say that it's for the cleaning of the auto to conform to the CARE Act?
Well, it does say that in the backup that's here.
All right, it just doesn't say it on this budget request. I'm just a little concerned that it's not connecting to each other.
There's, we have backup. There is a letter, you know, there is a letter from the chief to the Town Administrator that, you know, that explains they've been purchasing available stocks of PPE and sanitizer as it becomes available. And, you know, as well as signage. And that's, that's the money that they're moving from the Code Red account to operations. And then there's a second move, which is the $3,500 that is to support the cleaning and sanitation of the cruisers and the purchase of new tires for the new Ford SUVs. So there is a, there is backup that explains what this is for. Mr. Town Administrator?
I don't, I'm not going to question.
Donna, please let Chris speak, and then you can speak.
Just to clarify Donna's question, each individual invoice that comes in as it relates to COVID is marked COVID. So if the tires, which would not be COVID-related, they would not be marked and signed off as being a COVID-related reimbursement item. So we are tracking these by the categories that need to be in order to get reimbursed for them.
All right. No, I'm not, I'm not, excuse me, Tricia, I'm not questioning. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't, and I'm sure everything's fine. I just wanted to ask that question, that's all.
Okay. Mike, you wanted to say something?
Just from my experience, the town is required, when they put these COVID reimbursement expenses under the EMA guidelines, to actually, there's a special form that the town uses, much by the federal government. That's where the coding becomes important, not our internal coding, but the coding that we will use and the explanation that goes with that form. So as long as the Town Administrator and the department heads are tracking it, we then take that information and then put it onto a separate EMA form. And then that's what they use to determine whether or not it's going to be a reimbursement. Of course, they could request the backup for that information, and Counselor Cook's one is well taken, but as long as we have the backup, but it's not our codes that matter. It's their EMA, federal EMA codes that matter.
Okay, thank you.
If there's nothing else, is there a motion?
Madam President?
Counselor Edwards?
John Edwards, I'd like to make a motion to approve the four budget transfer requests asked for by Police Chief Jones, one from Code Red to Operations, and then three into the auto account or the tires account to purchase tires.
Joe Perry, second.
There's a motion and a second from Joe Perry. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs? Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor DiMedeers?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Moving on to item B, Fire Chief Mallow, Approval of Budget Transfers. There are five of them here from 3330, which is the, I'm just going to say that's the prefix on all of these account numbers. So I'm just going to use the second set of numbers then. 5107 Paid Holiday to 5111 EMS Incentive for $36,000. 5108 Longevity to 510.
$3,600.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
$3,600.
Oh, what, did I misspeak? Sorry. I meant to say, I thought I said.
$36,000.
Oh, 36,000, not 36,000, $3,600. From 5108 Longevity to 5111 EMS Incentive for $9,100. 5100 Chief Salary to 5111 EMS for $2,800. 5102 Clerical Personnel to 5168 Clothing Allowance for $5,330. And 5101 Personnel Salary to 5112 Fire Marshal Inspections for $985.
Joe Perry, question?
Yes, Joe.
Or the administrator. Chris, the EMS incentives, isn't that included in the contract? Isn't that already included in the budget for the year?
It was not included. There was an increase in the contract that was not included in the budget. Apparently, they had a, they received an increase of $10 or $17, and $17.50 a week, which was not reflected in the budget, so it increased the budget by $15,500. It was part of the contractual negotiations, but it never made it to the budget, and the chief explained that to me today.
Okay, thank you.
I actually went back and looked, and apparently, the fiscal impact statement that we were given, that we were voted on, did not actually include this. So, you know, but it is in, but it is in the contract.
Right.
And there's, it's a little hard to tell, because there's also another $5,000 that's in the final budget that doesn't seem to match up to the fiscal impact statement. So I'm not really sure. I'm not really sure how this happened. I know that we didn't get the standard fiscal impact that we usually get, that has salary benefits, you know, everything broken out. We got sort of a spreadsheet that had a bottom-line number on it, but it didn't break out the line items, and apparently, there was an error in that. So this is contractually obligated, as far as those items go.
Madam President, Joe Perry?
Yes, Joe.
One other question. Didn't we have two firefighters that left in December? That there should have been some salary money left over for the remainder of the fiscal year?
I believe we have some firefighters that have, are not there, that there are vacant spots. But that would not necessarily mean it would be, what they're looking for is money for the EMS account. I know it gets paid part of their salary, but it's not in the salary account. It's a separate line item. I'm sorry, that's Chris.
And I also, I do have a question about the clothing allowance transfer, because I thought, I thought that essentially firefighters got their clothing allowance at the beginning, once at the beginning of the year.
The way he explained it to me is, once they, as the new hires come through and they pass their probationary period, they're allowed to get their Class A uniforms. And I believe he was also, as chief, was allowed to buy his Class A uniforms, which would be separate and apart from what would happen at the beginning of the year.
Didn't he buy his Class A uniform last year? Denise, go ahead.
That isn't true, Chris. The clothing allowance. I don't understand why we're transferring that either, because there is a separate clothing allowance account. So these new firemen are going to get a check for this clothing allowance. It comes out of the clothing allowance fund. So I don't know why we're transferring any money, because there should be plenty left. And as far as the chief's concerned, his uniform came out of the clothing allowance account. Because I looked into it, because there was a controversy over it. There is a clothing allowance account that they get, I believe they get it every six months.
It is, but right now, as of March 31st, I'm sorry, this is Chris, as of March 31st, it is negative $704. So if.
Why? It doesn't make any sense.
Well, you're asking me a question, but I didn't go back and research all these to find out exactly where all this money's went.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense why that would be negative, because what I really think is these guys already got their clothing allowance, so they're supposed to buy their uniforms from that.
All right, so I would ask that you hold this in advance until I get more information out of them.
Thank you.
In that case, if, at the, at the Town Administrator's request, we can hold number four. And the Fire Marshal, apparently. You know, we have a new Fire Marshal, so there's a bit of a, apparently, training and assignment of the. Um, and assignment of the, of the new fire marshal. So.
Both will be in pay at the same time.
Yep. So, John?
Madam President, can I make a motion to approve the one, two, three, and five?
Is there a second?
This is Donna, I'll second it.
That's five.
There's a second from Joe Perry and I think a second from Donna. Uh, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counsel Perry?
Yes.
Counsel Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counsel DiMederos?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes.
Madam President?
Yes, John.
Um, I'd like to follow that up by making a motion to continue item eight B four to the next meeting.
That's the clothing allowance?
Yep.
Joe Perry, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, you have a question?
Yes, I need Counselor Edwards to repeat his original motion. Because I have, he's asked to approve B one, two, three, and five. I don't even have a five.
Under general, here, under general business, item E.
Eight B, one, one, two, three, and five. Fire Chief Mallow, it's under that one.
Oh, I'm sorry, John. You're correct. I'm looking at the uh, written uh, page instead of the.
No worries.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
So there's a motion to, there's a motion to continue eight B four until the following meeting and a second, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Driggs? Counsel Perry?
Yes.
Counsel Clark?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel DiMederos?
None. Yes.
And um, I'm a yes as well. Item C, Town Administrator DPW Director Rogers. Approval of budget transfers from Fund Two Fifty-Five, the restricted recycling account. To fifty-five thirty, seventy-one ninety-eight, the recycle center plan for fifteen thousand dollars.
Tricia.
Chris, would you like?
Tricia, this is, this is Donna. Uh, may I ask for something? I I just wanna, I I know you just said this one, but I, I wanted, before we get into the, and it, I I'm calling them money issues. Um, could we just do um, AF and get that out of the way? Because I think the rest of them all kind of relate to each other, if you don't mind.
Um, well, AF is an update on aquaculture issues?
Yeah, it's just an FYI to you guys, because I said I would update you as as we went along.
I know, but I'm not sure what aqua, does the aquaculture issues, I'm not sure how the aquaculture issues relates to.
That's what I'm saying. I just wanted to do it first and just get it out of the way. It's, I'm just gonna kind of read something to you. That's all.
Okay, well, hang on a second. You, we, we can't just do that. We have a posted agenda. So someone would have to make a motion and a second to move that item.
Okay, I'll make a mo- I'd like to make a motion to move um, eight F to be. Uh, the next to be discussed uh, under, in instead of going to C, that it would become C. And C would become, I don't know, F within that. And within the financial budget talking and some of the other things.
You want to take it out of the order?
Is there?
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Counsel Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
No.
Counselor Perry?
I'll say yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor DiMederos?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll only take a minute.
Okay.
So I think the others will be a little more.
So we're moving on to um, AF, update on aquaculture issues.
Right, I um, I had told everyone um, previous, I think it was in uh, uh, February. And uh, that I would get back to you on, on some of the, some of the issues and I just wanted to update you on that. Uh, update on aquaculture issues. Well, um, this is not a hearing or anything, it's just an update. Um, the first one was a Tividan uh, memorandum of understanding uh, with Tividan with the CRMC. Uh, didn't take place because it was canceled in March because of the uh, executive order. Uh, and you couldn't meet together anymore and you had to do things by Zoom. So that's going to be rescheduled at some point and uh, Solicitor Marcelo's working on that. Second, um, I spoke with the Harbor Commissioner Chair Bruce Cox. Uh, to find out what's going, when you're doing um, anything to do with aquaculture. You have to start to look to update your harbor management plan. So he said, um, and he gave me the okay to 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 update everyone. Uh, the commission is working on the updated harbor commission plan. They were making great progress, but then it was inter- you know. Uh, they ran into the uh, uh, coronavirus uh, issue. And they are also going to address the aquaculture in more detail within the harbor uh, ma- management plan. Um, FYI also, the CRMC was received two commercial viability aquaculture applications. For waters adjacent to Tividan. One is for a site in Skandit Riven, the other's for a site in Nanakwaka Pond. And with the help in working with uh, Mr. Carter, um, I wanted the um. It to be easy access for the public comment to be on our website page. And he was very, very gracious in in putting it on the first page that people have a comment about aquaculture. They could go directly to the first page on our town website and then be connected with the CRMC to make a, a comment. So um, just to let you know, uh, the time for the comments started April seventeenth. And it's supposed to end on May seventeenth, but uh, with the help of um, Mr. Cox. He was able to get that extended uh, to six-two-twenty. So um, I also had attached, and Nancy Mello was very helpful with this. To get the um, public notice also attached to your um, agenda item. With my request, so that you could take a look at it. Um, all the information uh, in depth is on the uh, CRMC website. And um, and that's it. That's all I wanted to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Um, okay, so we shall go back to um, we'll go back to uh, Town Administrator DPW Director Rogers. Approval of budget transfers from Fund Two Fifty-Five, the restricted recycling account. To fifty-five thirty, seventy-one ninety-eight, recycle center plan for fifteen thousand dollars. Chris, do you want to um, give everybody a quick overview on this?
So my understanding is that when the recycling center started, in order to have somebody take a look at it and develop a plan. The council authorized PAR to do this and the intent at the time was to take the money out of what was called a recycling fund. That when the state, uh, when the town used to transfer their recyclables to the state, they used to give us kind of like a rebate for it. And that money sits in a fund, not a specific account to draw out of. So there is some residual monies left in that, uh, and I believe it was the intent of the council to pay part of their fees to do the design. By using that rebate fund that was available and this transfer of fifteen thousand would accommodate that.
And if I'm not mistaken, that rebate, it it, it's required to be used on something recycling related. We have to use it on something that relates to recycling.
I think like we bought bins out of it years ago and some other recycling pieces that the town used.
Yeah, and I think we've used it for like um, flyers or educational campaigns, sort of stuff around recycling. It has to be recycling related. Um, so I think Director Rogers had talked to us about this before. It was just, we didn't have quite the right account number on it, so we had continued this to this, to a further meeting. So we could have the corrected account number on it.
Correct.
Um, do I have a motion from anyone? Counselor Edwards?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to um, approve the fund transfer uh, from uh, the restricted recycling account. To the recycling center plan in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars as per recommended by the administrator.
Is there a second?
Joe Perry, second.
There's a second. Uh, Nancy, did you want to, I I can't tell, did you want to ask a question?
I did, I have, well, now I just discussion, so I'm just unclear there. Um, so is this fifteen thousand that that they're asking for to cover work that's already been done? And we just need to figure work the PAR is already done and we're, we are just looking to reimburse them out of this account? Is that what this is about?
My understanding of it is they've already been paid. They were paid out of an account in DPW and this transfer. We punished that account the way it should be, because that money was never intended, that was in DPW to actually pay for this.
Okay, so that's something that's already passed and happened, okay, because.
Now, PAR is still, PAR is still working on this project for us.
I understand that and I think just moving forward, um, there's, I have a lot of questions asking moving forward. But if this is something that's passed and already happened, I'm fine. Okay.
Good.
So there's a motion and a second, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Driggs?
Yes.
Counsel Perry?
Yes.
Counsel Clark?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel DiMederos?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Now to a, now to a topic that we're, I think, a little all concerned about. Um, item D, the Town Administrator and the Treasurer, Discussion on Budget Expenses and Revenue Reports Regarding Potential Fiscal Year Nineteen-Twenty Shortfalls. So I'll turn it over to Chris and Denise.
So this is Chris. To start off with, obviously, we have some expenditures that we're incurring that were never ever anticipated. That relate to the COVID expenditures. So I provided you some guidance that we received from FEMA uh, and EMA and stuff. What their guidance is from uh, the feds as it relates to what could or couldn't be used. And the first item I'm absolutely just trying to dispel is that any of this money that's coming into the state as it relates to the CARES Act. Cannot be used to re- reimburse for lost revenues. But we are tracking every expenditure appropriately. Uh, we're using the guidelines that the feds have set out for it and every department is following those. And Denise's office will do it, do what we need to do to get the appropriate reimbursement for those expenses that we never ever envisioned. To that end, uh, we have been trying to take a pretty good look at where we stand. Well, I don't have a firm number to give you. Uh, with Denise's help, we've gone through the revenues. And we are showing right now a fairly significant shortfall, although the medical billings will help. Uh, but based on a, a summary that's uh, from a summary from uh, April twenty-second. We're about two-point-two million short in revenue projections. Uh, and we still don't know where the state's gonna go. Uh, when you think about um. From March through June with um, the governor actually allowing people. Still that income tax payments till July, uh, every non-essential business being shut down. And gambling shut down for four months. There is a huge shortfall in the state and we have no idea. What our pro-rata share will be among the state. So I did send an executive order early on from my standpoint to all departments that all discretionary spending was to stop. Uh, we have to really buckle down and try to figure out where we're gonna be. The trouble is we don't have any guidance from the state. Uh, and it's my anticipation that some of that guidance will not come until late May, early June. Uh, so, and those are gonna impact both FY twenty and FY twenty-one. Uh, I have taken a quick look through some of the budgetary expenditure items. I mean, I can come up with a good half million dollars worth of very quick places where we could preserve some monies. Uh, that's a far short of two-point-two million. Actually, it's less than that if the, I think that we'll probably bring in about five hundred thousand dollars in the medical. Uh, the rescue billings. So I reached out today to the Office of Minister of Finance. Because in as much as we have some problems like every other city and town does, we have a very unique situation with the gambling guarantee. I asked them today to give me an, an answer as to whether or not that guarantee was actually gonna hold, because we're about, of that two-point-two million. One-point-eight million of it is related directly to gaming. So uh, they did not have an answer from me today. They told me they were in the middle of researching that. Uh, I think we have a very good argument that it, it should still stand, um, but you know, we still need to go through that process of ensuring. That we can get those monies in. If we do get those monies in, I don't think we're as bad a shape as, you know, I thought we'd be. Uh, but we still don't know what the House Finance Committee is going to do as it relates to motor vehicle rebates. And those kind of things or any kind of uh, state share that uh, what, what we would be getting from the state. As a, an administrator for a state government agency for many years, um, as they came through the, the spring revenue estimating. We would always get guidance that our budgets would either be cut and we used to have to make it up in a very short period of time to close the fiscal year. And I'm fearful that we are going to get a pretty significant cut. How we handle those is something we're gonna have to work very diligently. Uh, to make sure that we can uh, get through the end of the fiscal year and not be in the red. So I don't know if Denise has any more to add to this. Um, I, we are both diligently going through these numbers to see where we can try to pair up some savings and generate some, some additional revenues.
Yeah, this is Denise Thret. Um, I don't have a lot to add to what Chris said. Um, other than we did today, get in another ninety-five thousand dollars in motor vehicles. So we got our fourth quarter motor vehicle um, phase-out money, which I was happy to see. I wasn't sure we were gonna get it. We did get, which you may already know from what I had submitted, we did get the um, third quarter. Revenue from the gaming revenue for January, February, and March that came in. Um, I said earlier, we uh, got a nice little uh, influx of rescue revenue. So. And we're at a ninety-six percent collection rate. So we've only got about a million and a half dollars remaining on the levy. To collect between now and the end of June. So our tax collections um, have been successful. We, the big question is the, the gaming revenue. You know, we, we knew we were gonna have a shortage, um, and always was curious how they were gonna make it up or when they were gonna make it up. And I had reached out like Chris did and um, they really didn't have an answer. So uh, that's what we're waiting to hear on.
Nancy Driggs?
Yeah, so I've really, really been pondering this, just in terms of Tividan and what we're looking for for answers. And I, I, I have a hard time understanding why. The state does not have a contractual legal obligation to make, to make us whole up to what they promised. They would at the time we put the casino in. And I don't have the answer to that, but that just strikes me as bizarre. And that's a huge amount of our deficit. But if that really is a question. Um, which it sounds like, I don't know, Chris, who you talk, have you, like, what's, what position is the governor taking on this? Do you know?
Well, to this Chris answering.
Only setting that has.
The governor wouldn't be the person weighing in on this. I mean, she'll ultimately make the final decision. They're going through their legal deliberative process.
Yeah.
I would venture to say that they are looking at it from a number of different standpoints, very similar to how she had tackled like the pension issues. Uh, which were also contractual obligations. Um, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, nobody's really even told us what venues that they're looking down as far as guidance on where they want to stand. But they will ultimately make a decision and they will have to tell us how they made that decision. And from there, we'll have to be able to figure where we want to go with that. Um, but.
Have any of our state reps or senators weighed in on this and come to help us out on this at all?
We, I've kind, I've spoken to our local rep about this, um, and he knows it's gonna be before the House Finance Committee as well. Um, which is separate apart from where the governor's, you know, opinion will come in. It, it, that's why we have some other venues that we can take this to, but uh, we need to, we need an action from the governor's people first. Before we can ask the legislature to give us a remedy, because we haven't been harmed yet, other than the fact that we don't have the money in house.
So then, just to. So then just to finish out where my thoughts have gone on this, you know, we've been given an edict by the state, some agency in the state, that we need to close the landfill by such and such a date. And my, and that's what's forcing us now to think about spending money on the recycling center. I mean, money that we, we don't have. And so I'm just wondering, do we have a leg to stand on and saying, you know what? If you're not coming through to honor your, your, you know, making us whole at the 3 million or 3 million one, whatever they're supposed to give us, then we're not holding to the landfill closure because we can't afford the option, we're going to put it off a year because we can't afford the option of a recycling center at this point. So that's sort of where my mind's going, for what it's worth.
Ca- Counselor Edwards.
So just to share some information on this, uh, if you read the law, the enabling legislation, that is what granted us the $3 million floor payment, stipulates in there that the casino has to be in operation 24/7. So as you can tell right now.
The one, the state's the one that shut it down.
Now, the state shut it down, but this, but if you read the legislation, you take a very literal, literal interpretation. What puts us at risk is the fact that the casino is not in operation 24/7. So that in and of itself creates a problem. Number two, this is in the contractual agreement. This is a state law that they can turn around and change tomorrow if the legislature so chooses, which also gives me pause. And then, uh, the third comment that you made, and I agree with it in principle, but ultimately the state is a sovereign entity. We are not. So it would behoove us to not make threats and to ask and work with our state delegation, uh, rather than making threats because ultimately we have no standing. The state has the laws in place, they can come down and enforce them if they so choose. So I would be very cautious about the approach that we take with regards to, you know, the casino money and then also with regards to, uh, the landfill component when we get there.
Denise DiMederos, did you want to say something? Denise?
Um, yeah, I.
Oh, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
Okay, is this separate from the host? Now, we have a host agreement. Has anyone looked at that?
I have, uh, this is Chris, I have looked for the host agreement. The host agreement doesn't have a guarantee in it. The, the guarantee is predicated by state law. Uh, when the.
All right, thank you.
They're all filed on their host agreement.
So, you know, one of the things, and, and I think this was a little bit not widely understood during the casino vote was that, um, there wasn't going to be a contract. People heard a lot about the $3 million guarantee, but they didn't really sort of pay attention. I don't think that this was being done through enabling legislation, not a, not a contract. And, and, you know, that was the, that was the deal that the voters accepted. And, you know, to, to compound the problem for us, I think, um, and this is, you know, this was my opinion as a counselor, you know, in the last election. And it was the advice that we had been given, uh, by Joe Almond, which was not to put this casino revenue into our general fund into operations. Because, and, you know, it was a small margin by 13 votes that, that failed in the last election. You know, rather than fencing this money off in using it only for, you know, debt service and, and, uh, and for, um, capital expenses. So, you know, now we've got it in, in operations. And I think the, you know, the, the fear that, that, you know, this money could, for one reason or another, although I don't think anybody ever expected that it would be essentially a virus, um, could it, could be not available to us for a year, um, is a real, is a real possibility.
Chris.
Yes, Denise.
The 3 million, what, the whole 3 million wasn't put in operation?
Yes, it was.
No, but it's, it is, it's essentially in operations. It all went into the general fund.
Yes, it did.
Well, yeah, it went into the general fund, but was it pulled out to balance the budget, the 3 million?
No. No, this is Denise.
No, but some of it is absolutely baked into operations right now. I mean, last year, I guess you could argue that some of it got spent on some of the capital, but I mean, it's baked into the, it's baked into the general fund into operations. Some of it is for sure, so.
It is.
Denise, what's in the general fund right now?
Are you referring to the unreserved general fund?
Yes.
Uh, hang on.
Because the vote was to take it from the general fund, but not necessarily. Do you see what I'm getting at? Just because it went in, well, the vote was to take a certain amount of money from the general fund. But that didn't necessarily mean our revenue from the casino, we already had over the 3% in operational. And I mean, in the general. Am I making any sense? It didn't say we're taking.
No, I don't, no, you're not. Okay. Hang on, I'm just looking something up.
Because what did we take from the general fund to balance last year's budget? That's my question.
$614,000.
Almost 100% of what came in.
What? What came in last year?
What came in last year was, uh, 1.8? No. Hang on.
So what I'm trying to say is the 3 million that's coming in this year isn't affecting this year's budget, it's next year's budget.
No.
No, it affects this year's budget.
Fiscal year 20, fiscal year 20 budget, this is Denise Saret, included $3.1 million in gaming revenue as part of the state revenue number. It's all in the operating budget. And in addition to that, we took out $14,000 out of the general fund to balance the budget.
So we took all of the gaming revenue and put it in the general fund?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. When, when that.
And then spent it.
When that, when that, um, when that resolution didn't pass, um, in the election, it all went into the general fund. I mean, I think the, I think the big is, the, the, the big issue.
I still don't understand. I still don't understand. I guess I won't, I guess I'm too tired.
So, well, let me ask you a question, Denise Saret, what is in the unrestricted general fund account right now? Can you tell us?
As of the audit, 6:30, because the unrestricted general fund really only gets calculated once a year. I mean, I can try to roll forward a number for you, but as of then, it was 3.3 million dollars.
Okay.
In the unrestricted general fund.
Which is how much is the cap?
Which is, I have three devices going here right now. Hang on.
I think the other thing while Denise is looking that up is that the drag on the casino revenue itself, you know, is, it, it drags along several things with it, right? So for example, um, the police and, you know, the, the detail, police and fire detail is right now short $80,000 because we're not doing police and fire details. The meals and, you know, the, the meals and beverage tax, um, you know, is, you, you know, that's another shortage because obviously, you know, the casino generated a lot of, of meals and beverage tax and, and hotel tax. So it, it's not just the casino revenue itself, it's the ancillary revenue that was coming with it as well. So I, I think that.
Haven't we also? Haven't we also made the decision, I think, right, to take, to pay for the recycling center, a big chunk of it out of this unrestricted general fund?
We're obviously not going to be doing that.
Well, where's it coming from?
This is like, this is like the worst time ever, but this is the biggest I've told you so moment, I think, in the history of mankind.
I mean, you know, th- this is what we're, this is what we're facing. So I think that we're just going to have to ask the town administrator as very best as we can, you know, to put the brakes on every single bit of non-emergency spending between now and the end of the year and, and, and see what we can do, especially with the state. And, and, you know, next year to me is, that's a whole really big question mark. I, I mean, it's possible that because, because this was in our budget for this year, that maybe, and, and so far on the, on the casino revenue, we've gotten in, um, you know.
1.2 million.
We've gotten in 1.2 million.
Right.
We'll see if we get the other payments and whether or not, you know, they'll hold up the guarantee, knowing that, you know, essentially it was already in our budget. I think next year's casino revenue is a giant question mark. So. Chris, hang on, Chris wanted to say something.
So there is just one other piece of this puzzle that you should keep in, and I'm not picking on education at all, but, and I'm not picking on the FTR process. It happened with the financial town meeting process as well. Every time that we authorize a budget, inevitably the state legislature comes up with new numbers and our educational numbers, uh, as what we projected in the FTR, which would have been FTM or any other process, came in $316,000 light than what was anticipated. So that's also a shortfall that we're making up. So there are issues like that, that, you know, that are affecting our bottom line, that you should, you, you just need to know that.
Our education numbers just have to be the MOE, right?
Excuse me?
Our education, what we give to the schools.
Yes.
We're just obligated to do a MOE from last year. Okay, um, there's something else I was going to say. So as I understand it, Donna has a request somewhere to see if we could get an extension on the landfill with.
I, I mean, hang on, we have that as an agenda item and I think we can discuss that as a separate, a separate agenda item. Understanding that we have a, but, but let's not mix agenda items so we stay on track. I, I think that the big thing here is that, you know, we're going to have to work with the town administrator, who's going to continue to work with the Department of Municipal Finance. Um, and we may need to get our solicitor involved too, uh, to see what we can do and what we're going to get on that guarantee for this year. But, you know, we're going to have to just really clamp down on the spending, um, between now and the end of the year and, and, and hope that we can make up what is essentially right now a 2.2 million dollar deficit. So, John, Counselor Edwards.
So just for the purpose of clarification from the administrator and the treasurer, last year we got 1.8. We took 600 and change out of the, out of it to put into this year's budget. We assumed we were going to get 3.1, meaning the $3 million guarantee plus the $100,000 that we got through the legalization of, uh, online gambling. That makes up the 3.1. Now we don't know what that number is, um, but we are short a significant amount from the 3.1. Am I understanding this correctly?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, so bottom line here is that we should have paid more attention and listened to Joe Hammond from Lincoln, rather than just go forward and assume that this windfall of money was going to rain down from the sky in perpetuity.
Madam President, just, I would urge you all, and I, this was informational, so that you would know where we are. Without having all the pieces together and all the final declarations from whoever we're going to get them from, I would not do a knee jerk reaction other than hold on spending. Uh, and obviously, we're going to spend monies on things that we need to do to get through this COVID issue that we know will get reimbursed. We will do everything that we can to come in on time, on budget, within the parameters of the budget that we have. Uh, and we will work diligently to make sure that we try to get all the revenues that we have coming in. I don't want people to panic and knee jerk and say, well, we shouldn't do this or we shouldn't do. But I know two months is not a lot of time to be patient. I am about ready to, you know, jump out of my shoes sometimes myself, but there are, you know, we, we got to get some people to get us some information first and just somewhat be patient with it. That I, I can understand all your frustrations, believe me, I'm going through it every day. Uh, but we will try to work this thing through so that we don't wind up in the, in the red.
All right, and I know that Chris will keep us, I, I know that you will keep us posted and updated. And as you get any information from the state and from the Office of Municipal Finance, you'll be sure, sure to share it with the council as, as soon as you get it. So, um, yes, Nancy.
Yeah, I just want to end with, thank you, Chris. I understand that. I think it's, I personally feel it's imperative that we do get a budget in this year and follow our charter. But in that regard, I, I think, and we'll, we'll get to Donna's thing. But if, if by chance we are given an extension to close the landfill based on this COVID and every, all the issues it's raised, that Donna raised in her request to have that happen, I think that's important to consider because I think it would be, would it be, give us more time to, to spend money on recycling? That's all I'm saying.
All right, in that case, let's move on to, um, item E, uh, which is actually Counselor Cook's resolution in support of the extension of the landfill closure.
Okay, thank you. Um, I haven't done a resolution before, so I did the best I could. Um, all right. Whereas the town of Tivon has a scheduled date of November 2020 to close the landfill, after which it will no longer accept trash or operate the recycle center on the premises and will begin capping the landfill. And whereas the landfill capping construction project will necessitate the recycle center, which operates on the landfill site, to be shut down before the capping begins and re-located at a considerable cost to another site. And trash collection will have to be hauled to Johnston with prohibitive costs. And whereas at present, there has been considerable long-term planning regarding the landfill closure, pay it, trash pickup services and recycle center issues and cost. And whereas what wasn't planned was this unprecedented time of pandemic COVID-19 and emergency measures decreed by federal, state and local governments to stem the spread of the virus by self-isolation, where people have lost of income because of not being able to work. The bottom line of businesses are impacted due to loss of client support and personnel. Business, federal, state and local governments' budgets are also impacted. And whereas the town's resource, sources of revenue will be impacted by the closing of the casino and loss of other sources of revenue, this will impact the town's budget and the town's ability to pay for the additional costs associated with the landfill closure. And whereas the cost of the new recycle center is estimated, um, and this is low because we just got the new figures, of $5 to $600,000, trash collection plus hauling to Johnston will be added cost of $120,000 and tipping fees for trash disposal of $310,000, totaling, totaling an extra $930,000 in addition to the 2021 budget. Some expenses were to come out of the general fund and casino revenue, but the casino was presently closed. The state is to make up the shortfall, but the state revenue was impacted also. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of Tivon Town Council, are in support of deferment and relief on the landfill capping construction project and request an extension of two years for the closure date to be November 2022. And be it further resolved that the members of the Tivon Town Council, due to the COVID-19 effects on the budget, urge our state representatives, DEM and other state agencies that are involved in landfill closure to allow the requested landfill closure extension to be two years to enable the town of Tivon to be in a better position to afford the added expenses of the closure. And finally, be it further resolved that the Tivon Town Clerk is hereby directed to forward a copy of this resolution to the governor, all state representatives, DEM and all the other agencies that have a say on the town's request for the two-year extension of the landfill closure, including the capping of the landfill for the support of our request. And I picked two years because. And I picked two years because there is such disarray uh, going forward that I thought this coming up year would give us a chance to get our footing and then be able to go forward and have it close for 222. That was my thought process. And of course, the landfill money, most of it's there, but these are all the costs associated with the landfill. And so I'm asking for the, once you cap it, you have to move the recycle center, once you cap it. If you don't cap it, you can leave the recycle center there. So the capping is the problem. And then the added cost. And that was my thought process with this, um, resolution.
Oh, is this a motion or what?
Yeah, is there a motion?
Okay, I would like to make a, a motion to accept this, um, extension as stated in the resolution to be sent to, uh, the designated people. If there's other people to send this resolution to for the extension to happen, uh, it would be welcomed. Um, and, and that's, that's my, my motion.
Is there a second?
We have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second discussion. Chris, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, you're not gonna like what I have to say. Um, I, I applaud the effort. Uh, but I've done some research in the last couple of days. Uh, I've actually looked through the files that Jan had and Matt Wojcik. Uh, we actually applied for an extension back in 2015, I believe it was, on July. And the response that came back from DEM wasn't that they would allow a time issue as it relates to the landfill. The landfill isn't looked at as it relates to time. It's looked at as it relates to volume. It's, uh, as it, as it's related to its footprint and to its height. And when November comes this year, we will be at the maximum footprint and its maximum height. Uh, they were denied the ability to expand the landfill by three feet back in 2015 for the same reason. Uh, that they, that, that they, the re- the reply was that, um, that came through is that you can ask for it. Um, you can ask for an extension, uh, but you're gonna have to be able to demonstrate that the additional trash that you put into that landfill, you're going to have to have a, a full liner and a fully chained collection system, which would cost in the millions to do.
Well, we don't have it though, Chris. That's, that's.
Donna, please, one, like, can, it's hard for people at home. So one person at a time, if they could speak, and Chris has the floor.
I, I also spoke with, um, um, somebody at DEM, uh, today about this, uh, same issue. While they understand our financial predicament, uh, he said flat out that we would probably get denied based on it. I'm not saying you shouldn't do it. What I would suggest is that we bring in Tim Tease from PAR, who, uh, has an excellent reputation as it relates to, uh, landfills and get an opinion from him as to what best should be done. Um, I, I would suggest that that would be an alternative that you take before you do the resolution. And maybe if, um, he could help us craft a resolution that would be more suitable, that DEM would accept. I, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying, I applaud the effort. I, believe me, I, I understand where we're at. Uh, and I, I just don't want to send something as an, again, without really fully vetting it with the appropriate people who know how to get a license for landfill. And I think Tim could help us with that. Um, I, I would rather we be a little bit more cautious before we send something off. I would prefer to have it with a little bit more substance behind it, uh, that maybe he could help us with. And also explain to the council, uh, you know, as to what his views are, as to where we should go with this.
Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, John Edwards. Um, so I did send some notes, uh, to Counselor Cook on this. Um, you know, as we had discussed before the whole virus thing happened. Um, you know, and I would caution the administrator, uh, just a piece of advice, don't go borrowing trouble, right? So I don't wanna impugn that DEM is gonna tell us to go pound sand without asking the question. I do like the suggestion that you have to get PAR Engineering to take a look at this. So we make sure we've got something with potentially more teeth. Um, Counselor Cook and I did both tried to find the original, uh, landfill, I guess lease is what it would be called, or, uh, or permit to operate the landfill. Um, it's always been my understanding that we had a specific height above sea level we were, uh, allowed to go to. Um, and that a few years ago, whether this is true or not, um, again, I, the, the information is very hard, hard to come by. Um, but that we were told specifically, we couldn't go back into a specific section of the landfill where we're currently operating a recycling center today, um, because we hadn't been putting trash there for a couple of years. Uh, if that is the case, uh, it seems draconian in nature, uh, you know, and I, I think that would be worthwhile for us to put up a fight. Now, that being said, if we save $500,000, $600,000 in the next fiscal year, I think it's a win. Doesn't close our 1.8 or 2.2 million dollar budget deficit that we're looking at now, but at least helps us get there. Um, and ultimately, I think instead of two years, we should look at three. Um, or whatever the case may be, for us to continue to put trash up to the mean height above sea level and operate that landfill in its current state. Um, just because, quite frankly, I mean, with the budget stuff going on, you know, we might be in a position where there might not be anybody to even regulate us. Um, if the state is that, that, that far down the path. So I, I think it's worthwhile for us to ask the question. I would encourage, um, you know, following the, the administrator's advice, and we take this and maybe put it off to the next meeting. So we can allow the, the guys at, at PAR Engineering to take a look at it, give us some feedback. Maybe we can have the solicitor take a look, give us some feedback as well, since he was in the General Assembly. He understands the mindset of, uh, of how our, um, delegation would work up there. Uh, and that would be my suggestion. You know, I think we, I think we should take this, get some more feedback on it, and then bring it back up for a vote.
Any other counselor wanna comment? Counselor? Counselor Driggs?
Uh, thank you, John. I totally agree with Chris, with John and with Donna. And I think we, it would be good to get, I agree with, with John and Donna, that you don't get anything if you don't ask for it. And we need to put up a fight, I think. Um, I think it's a great idea to have PAR involved to maybe really find, find to the resolution. Um, so it, so I have no problem putting it off to the next meeting. And I will say, just experientially, I mean, when I was on the Budget Committee in whatever it was, 2014, 15, every year the landfill, we had reached our limit and every year we had another four or five inches to go. So it seems like it's sort of a movable target, and I'm all for asking for this. And I wouldn't even go for the three years. But I agree with John and Don and Chris.
Counselor DiMaderis? Did you, did you buzz in there for a second? Denise? Denise?
I think she buzzed out.
Okay, well, um, uh, uh, you know, I think that it's worthwhile investigating this, whether or not, oh, Denise, are you back? Denise? She's, I thought she was back for a second. Denise, are you there? You're on mute. Denise? I think, cause I thought she wanted to say something. Denise, when you're ready, buzz in. Um, I think that, um, I think it's worthwhile asking, but I also think that, um, you know, A, we need to be prepared for no, in case the ultimate answer is no. I also think that there is a chance, you know, even if they don't necessarily let us continue with the landfill, maybe they'll let us keep the recycling there for a while. Maybe they'll let us, you know, use, use, keep the recycling up there. But I think that we will have a better chance, in part because we actually have the money to cap the landfill. I mean, that's in a restricted account. I think that once we get our budget squared away, once we understand what we're looking at, and, and then we can potentially go to the DEM, you know, having made a good faith effort to say, okay, you know, here's where we are, here's where our budget is, you know, can we work out something? And if, if, um, you know, if PAR can help us with that, then we have more likelihood of getting success with the DEM as opposed to trying to do a resolution now that we fire off when we don't really have, um, we don't really have our budgetary facts in order and, uh, we're not taking advantage of, of, um, letting PAR help us to try and craft our ask in a way that it's most likely that we can get a yes. So, um, Chris, I, oh, Denise, are you back? Denise? Um, so Chris, did you wanna say something other than that? Is there, we have a motion in a second, but.
The, the one piece of good news I did get was I did ask that question specifically of Tim Tease from PAR, that, well, what his opinion is, as to if we did get delayed in the recycling center, would it be, did he think it would be permissible to run the recycling center at the top of the landfill like we do today? Absence of taking in any trash at all. He thought that that would be, uh, approved by DEM.
Well, that's a start, right?
Have to be asked in the appropriate manner.
On the recycle?
Yes. It would be temporary, cause it, the capping of the landfill has a timeframe to have that performed. So they would probably allow us to do it for a certain period of time until that section would need to be capped over. But he thought it would be worth asking if we did get delayed.
Great.
All right. So there's a motion in a second on this resolution. Um, uh, Donna, do you want a vote on your motion or, or are you, uh, considering withdrawing it?
Oh, I'm not gonna withdraw it. I think we can't afford to do it. So, um,
Okay.
Can Donna amend the motion to have it continued for a week?
All right. So, um, I wanna respect everyone's opinion and certainly Chris's opinion. And if, if, uh, everyone's input was very helpful. So, um, I will make a motion to continue this to the next meeting. Um, and, uh, how does everyone want this to go? Do they want it to be that Chris talks to Pear? Um, I guess that would be.
I'll get him on the next meeting.
Okay. Very good.
So I think, well, we can.
The appropriate, the appropriate motion would be a motion to table to the date certain, which would be the next meeting.
Um, so, so that is one question. And, and not that, not that I wanna delay this, but, and we can keep moving it, but is, given where we are in the budgetary thing, is one week enough? Or should we wait until our first meeting or our second meeting in May? I just don't wanna put it on the agenda and then say, oh, well, we gotta move it again, cause we're still, I'd like to ask the town administrator how much time he would like.
I will try for the next meeting. I know we have a pretty packed agenda at the next meeting with the public hearings, though. So that, I'll defer to you. I'm not familiar with how public hearings go.
So, so would, um, so Donna, would you be willing to amend your motion to say a meeting in May? So just in case we don't have everything for the first meeting, it could be in the second meeting without having.
Okay, um, we have a, yeah, we do have, um, public hearings on the 11th. So, um, why don't I amend it that we, um, revisit this, uh, for the May 2025 meeting?
Okay. So.
We better be done with the virus by then.
Yeah, so.
To the May 25th.
Yes, till the May 27th meeting. So there's a motion and I need a second on the amended motion. Yes?
Second.
Okay.
John Edwards.
Okay, roll call vote. Um, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
That May?
Yes.
Yes, yes. And this is going, what date, the 25th?
The 27th, I thought it was.
27th, 27th.
Counsel Perry?
Yes.
Counsel Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor DiMaderis? Denise?
It's May 26th would be the, right, estimating in May.
Okay. Um, I don't, I'm not getting an answer from, uh, from Denise, but, uh, but I'll vote yes.
I, I did try to send her a text. I, I know when she speaks, the thing goes on, but I, we're not hearing her. So I don't know if we can get a message to her. We're unable to hear her.
I can try and send her a text.
Madam President, while you're.
Yes, John.
I'd just like to ask, uh, the administrator, when you reach out to PAR, um, if it's a conference call that you end up doing, uh, I can make it, I'd love to attend.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, let's move on to, um, item G, uh, which is under my name. And I requested that the town administrator, um, get an update on the recycling center costs because frankly, we got one set and we got a plan that came in. And we didn't get really a chance to talk with PAR about the plan, but it was a little fancier than I had expected. So I think that the town administrator has gone back to PAR to talk about uh, the plan and where there might be some, uh, savings in it. So I'm gonna ask Chris to take over from here.
Uh, this is Chris. So I did go back to PAR and I, I spoke with Rick. Um, we did get a revised budget, uh, in the end of March. Uh, unfortunately, I think the revised budget, uh, didn't really help a whole lot. Because I think the January budget was 750 and then the March budget went up to 801 because there were a number of things that weren't included, like the main, the water main that has to be brought in, uh, to put a hydrant in. Um, but one of the, um, PAR did come up with some uh, recommendations that we could save some monies. And there's a page on this that outlines a number of different things that could bring our budget down to about where we need. Uh, and one of them was install a cistern. And I currently have, uh, PAR agreed with it. Um, and I have the Fire Marshal's Office looking at it, putting, uh, replacing a water line with a 10,000 gallon cistern, because there's really no structure um, that we really have to worry about. There is, you know, obviously that if it did catch on fire, we would have, um, recyclables, but, uh, that might get us by for now. Um, and there are a number of other items that they recommended. Um, as it related to the construction of the mixed recycling, uh, aspect of it. Uh, we would eliminate some of the raised concrete sidewalks. There, there were a number that, uh, we had looked at. Then I spoke to Rick because I, you know, I still think that the DPW staff could do some of the work to help mitigate some of those costs. So we had worked, um, to, to come up with, you know, quite a bit of those. Um, but he still hasn't confirmed how much money it would cost to rent some of the equipment he's gonna need. So I don't have a true number on where that would be. But because we have some of the monies that are gonna pay for this, are gonna come out of the industrial park uh, fee structure this, that, from some of the sales, it's not all gonna come out of the general fund and reserve, uh, to pay for this. So the road piece will be covered by the industrial park monies. It's the balance piece. So it was broken up into two segments. Um, and I think that we, you know, the, the memo that I provided you in my 419 uh, summary actually kind of gives a pretty good outline as to where we could be, not counting the things that DPW could do. So I think we're in pretty good shape with it. I mean, I still think we can generate another, you know, uh, $50,000 to $75,000 in savings. Uh, I would also say that we should probably, once it's, um, permitted to work on, that we offer the land up for some of the woodcutters to see if they would cut the wood and, uh, clear it for, they can have the wood. Uh, to see if there's any way that we could have, you know, somebody entertained doing that, which would save us some money as well.
What about our friend Bill Sales?
I, I, I haven't even talked to him, but that's an issue with the water line I wanna talk about.
Right. So I do have a.
He's gonna have to put one in.
I do have a question about the water line, right? So the water line now goes where? Because there's water in there, obviously. So is it just, are they talking about just running the water line down this little stub of road? Where is this water line that's.
No, I believe the water line still has to come down Progress Way. I'm, I'm not sure where the, um, power plant gets their water from. Um, I know there is water that we put a water bean in when that industrial park was built to the corner of Progress Way and the sewer line went there as well. Um, but I'm not sure where it goes from there. But according to Rick, we would have to put in a line down Progress Way. Uh, and I don't think it even gets to the stub road.
So. The 500 feet minimum. There's definitely water on Industrial Way, right? That I know for sure. And as a matter of fact, there are hydrants on Industrial Way. The pool water people use the hydrants. That's their authorized filling location. Joe Perry, you, I think you know. Joe?
Well, I, I, if I'm not mistaken, there is a hydrant down near the power plant. So there must be a line that runs down that road to the power plant. Cause I believe they need a water supply for the power plant.
Yeah.
But I know there is a hydrant down there.
So I, I just would like to make sure that we actually need to run this. So I, I just would like to make sure that we actually need to run this water line, whether or not like the town needs to do all of this or are we, you know. Uh, Counselor Edwards, you're raising your hand.
Yeah, I was just going to add, I mean, the power, the power plant does have town water. There is a line that runs to their facility. Because they have to cycle the water through every so often, uh, with their power generation. So they're, I mean, they're not pulling a ton, but they're pulling. Some on a regular basis. I think every thirty days they pull a big load in.
So I'd be curious about that. So Chris, are, if, if I'm, I just want to clarify that if I'm reading this correctly. That with the savings here, you know, eliminating, for example, the raised concrete walkways and cutting back of the landscaping and all that other stuff. It brings the costs back down to five fifty nine?
Correct.
Okay. And potentially maybe there's even a little bit more in there.
Yeah.
Uh, depending on, uh.
What DPW can do.
What, what, what DPW can do?
Yes.
And then the road work section would still come out of the industrial park fund, which is set aside for. Roadwork, right?
Correct. Yes.
And, and if we had to put the water line in there.
I would say we would take it out of the industrial park fund as well because it would add infrastructure to the industrial park.
Yep. Okay. So, um.
So I think we're pretty good as it relates to the center itself. It's whether or not we actually want to spend this money now, um, or defer it if depending on how bad we get.
Well, I, I, I don't know that we have the money right now, but I, I do think that at least in my opinion, continuing to review the plan. And being able to show DEM a good faith effort that we're not just trying to kick the can down the road here is not. That, that's a useful thing.
Of course.
So i- if we can continue to do things, um, that, you know, are not. You know, overtly expensive in working in that direction. I, I'm not opposed to doing that because there is always the possibility, as much as we want to. Hope that that's the case, that DEM says no. So I, I don't think we can just say we're, we're not going to do this. Do you think that PAR? In this, and I don't know if it's here, without PAR spending a lot of money, could they give us a new drawing that showed these eliminations? From the last drawing that we got or is that.
I believe they can. I believe they can, so.
So that we could, we could see maybe, um, if not, you know, again, maybe at that second May meeting, we could get a drawing. With these eliminations included and get an idea of what, what it would look like.
Okay. I, the one thing that I was concerned about, and I did ask him. Was on the removal of the concrete under the pads, uh, the, under the bins. Could we get away for the, like a year or so with hard pack gravel? He said we could, which is not in the savings issue. Uh, it would be an additional savings. He said, but he would not recommend going more than a year because they will wash out and they'll be eroded and it will be very difficult to operate them after a year. So he does recommend if it was a temporary measure that we might be able to get another savings there as well too. But he would recommend that we, if we could, to put the concrete under the bins. But not on the sidewalk issues.
They have to pay for new drawings that they draw.
I'll ask him, but I think because they've recommended these savings that they won't have any issue with it. And if it is, it should be very normal.
I think they're mostly taking things off the existing drawing. They're not redrawing something there, you know, using their CAD program and deleting things. So it shouldn't be too much. Um, well, I think, you know, I, I, I'll only speak for me. I know we need a recycling center, but we don't need the Taj Mahal of recycling centers. And, um, so as long as it's practical and functional and safe. Um, but I, I don't think anybody's expecting, uh, fancy and where we can save, we should be saving. So unless anybody has anything else on that, um, can we move on to? Item H, which is somewhat related, which is the town administrator. Discussion and vote to start application filing process for freshwater wetlands permit with the DEM.
So what I provided to you is the original plan, uh, timeline that PAR put out and within that. There were the DEM permitings that were supposed to start in early April, which have not started. And I did get clarity today on the actual permitting. It's not freshwater. I assumed that because that's when I built my property. Any standing groundwater on a piece of property are required to have freshwater issues looked at by DEM. He said, because we're doing a stormwater management, that the freshwater is included within that and they don't see any issue with it. But it's all vetted by DEM. Uh, but they need the stormwater permits to move forward. And the freshwater will be taken care of at the same time. Uh, but it does not require a public hearing. It just requires some notice to be a butters and it needs to be filed with DEM so we get that process going. The further we push this out, the further it's going to push the end date out if we don't get to it now. So. I would recommend or my suggestion is that we allow the permitting process to start.
Is there a motion? Counselor Edwards?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to, um, grant, uh, or to, uh, to start. The application filing process for the freshwater wetlands permit with DEM and instruct the administrator to proceed as discussed.
Is there a second?
Second, Steve Clark.
Steve Clark seconds. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
I, I have one question please. I'm sorry. If you get, if you go forward with the permitting process and you get the permit, is the permit only good for a certain number of years? If, in other words, if we delay the recycling?
I'll ask PAR that question. I believe it would be good for the, they will give us a period to do the, you know, the, the construction. Uh, but I believe most of those permits are good for a, a number of years, uh, to, to, to get done. Um, but I'll ask with the timeframe that on the end, end of that permit, how long it's good for.
All right, all right. I, okay, I'll vote yes.
Counsel Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel DiMederos?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Uh, so moving on to item I, this is under my name. Um, and this is a request for approval for the high school senior class officers who would like to put up. Um, a congratulatory banner, um, at either the Bulgarmarsh Playground and/or Grinnell's Beach. I was contacted by the class officers and as you can imagine, having worked all these years. For senior year and graduation and prom and all the great stuff that happens when you, um, graduate. Uh, this year's class because of the pandemic. Um, you know, isn't going to have the opportunity to have all of those things. On the plus side, there are class officers who are very motivated and are doing their very best to make lemons out of lemonade. Um, or make lemonade out of lemons. I've got that backwards. Um, and I give them a lot of credit for, uh, trying to find other ways to celebrate their senior year. Um, would like to put up a, some type of congratulatory banner. Uh, there are two options and maybe they will take both. One would be to run a banner along the, um, fence. That goes along, uh, the Bulgarmarsh Gate Park. There's a big long chain link fence that's there. And then the other would be potentially to, um, string some kind of banner between the, um, posts from the shade cell structure at Grinnell. Since we're not putting up the shade cell right now. So, uh, they're asking for our permission. I did run this by the Chair of Recreation who said. Um, uh, that right now recreation is not meeting. And historically in the past, the council has given permission for such things as we do, for example, for Little League to put up their banners. So, um, is there a motion to, uh, support this?
Madam President.
Counselor Edwards?
So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, support and approve or grant approval for the high school senior class officers. To put their congratulation banner at either one of the locations or both.
Or both. Is there a second? Joe Perry seconds. Counselor Edwards?
Question?
Yes.
Counsel Driggs?
Yes.
Counsel Perry?
Yes.
Counsel Clark?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel DiMederos?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Um, moving on to, um, comments and announcements. Um, and before we, uh, go into all of these, I would like to make a request and I'll need the solicitor's help here. Um, to amend our agenda under announcements, comments and discussions. Uh, so that we could have Stu Gill fill in, who is the Chair of the Recreation Committee and the. Town Farm Renovation Committee join us for a few minutes, um, at the end of our. At the end of our, uh, section A. Um, nine A, so it would become, I guess, nine, nine A six.
So the, uh, motion, Madam Chair, would be the Chair would accept the motion pursuant to general laws forty two, forty six, sixty. Be to amend the agenda to include, uh. To include an update from the Chair of the Recreation Committee regarding, uh, the, uh, regarding, uh, uh, DEM projects and applications for local parks.
There's a mo- is there someone to make that motion?
Madam President.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And John Edwards seconding, excellent. Um.
This should be for discussion only, no votes.
And it's for discussion only, no votes. And so, uh, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counsel Clark?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Counsel DiMederos?
Yes.
Okay. And I see Stu has joined us for a little bit. Um, we have a few items to get to, Stu, if that's okay with you. And then, um, and then, then we'll have you join us, but you're welcome to hang out with us for a little while. Uh, so under the town administrator, um, we have, uh, item one. Update on the fiscal year twenty twenty one municipal budget and financial town referendum deadlines. Uh, there are two sub items to that. Counselor Cook's agenda requests comments. And the town administrator memorandum to the council. So I'll turn it over to Chris so he can bring us all up to speed. Uh, where we are or aren't.
So, um, I've provided a couple of memos to you, one on, uh, April thirteenth and again, one on April sixteenth as it relates to. Some of the frustrations that, you know, we're having as it relates to a lot of cities and towns. Um, trying to get their, uh, legally mandated charters or referendums or ordinances. Up and going so that they can put together a levy for next year, a budget and a levy for next year. Um. I, without getting the appropriate guidance that we have from, uh, State Office of Municipal Finance. Uh, and I, we alluded to this a little bit earlier as we talked about the budget and the, you know, discussions surrounding those. I, I, I don't think I'm at all suggesting that we not have an FTR. Um, I, I, you know, it's our charter. It's what we live by. It's what, you know, how we, you know, it was fully vetted by people to, to, to do this. But I do think that we are up against the timeframe right now of the first real action, other than. Uh, the clerk's office where we have some issues that relate to. Uh, the canvassing aspect of putting the FTR forward. Uh, but the budget committee needs to have their scenario done by May seventh. Uh, so it, it's really gonna. Again, put a committee in a box of trying to make a decision without having facts. Uh, and it's, I just wanted to put these in, you know, this out there so that everybody could see it. Now that I'm assuming the public will see issues that we are wrestling with, trying to get the FTR off the ground. It's not at all being done by trying to be tricked or anything like that. It's, it's just the, the nature of how the town has to operate. Um, it, it would be, I just think it would be somewhat foolhardy to go ahead and try to force the budget committee. To put forth a budget without having any semblance of having correct information in front of it. It will also be very expensive because, uh, if we do this and we go through and we have an FTR. With inappropriate information and we subsequently find that what the real information really harmed us, we would have to have a second, uh, FTR. Which I believe Nancy could have addressed as far as the cost that might go towards having that. It, I, I would just, again, I'm, I'm trying to be very cautious about ensuring that we have. Enough information to move forward. I don't want to, again, just put something together and take a stab at something and just be totally off base. So I think that these memos help and, uh, show the issues that we're having. And believe me, every city in town that has the same issue is going through the same pains that Tiven is going through as well.
Nancy?
Yeah, first of all, I, my, uh, my screen froze for a minute, so I think I missed. I might've missed a tiny bit of what Chris was talking about, but, um, I, I think. I think we're all, we are a state chartered mandated charter. And I think we need to, we need to have the FTR. Um, I think the budget committee is going to have to do the best they can do with whatever figures they have that are available. At the time they have their meeting by May seventh. And I think we need to move forward with it. Um. If, if it turns, uh, we get more revenues than they anticipated, that's one thing. But their obligation will be to try to figure out a budget on the revenues that they think are going to be there, period. And I, I guess I also have a question of Chris, uh, and the, in the other cities and towns you've talked to. How many of them have the same fiscal year that we have? They're facing this, this punch to get a budget by?
I don't have the exact number. There are some that have June thirtieth year ends. There are some that have different year ends. Um, there are, I don't have anywhere near the requirements that we have in our charter. Uh, as far as having petition of budgets or, um, like the town having the ability to put in their own budget after. Or the, the hearing aspect. So there, there are a lot of criteria. And I know Nancy has some relates to the canvassing aspects as well. Uh, so trying to get all those prerequisites done in time too. Uh, are part of that dilemma of, and believe me, I've been very emphatic with the, uh, League of City and Towns. Who's done an excellent job of marshalling all these questions to the legal staff of the governor's office. The issue is we're not getting any real response back as to what we can and can't do. So, uh, the best scenario that I can formulate in some of the other cities and towns have come up, but then it's, believe me. I'm all ears. I'm, just because I've come up with something doesn't necessarily mean it's the best thing. So if we could get one quarter of a levy based on the current year, and that only generates money. It doesn't set a budget. And then have the deliberate process of the budget to go through from where it stands today. And then reset whatever the last three quarters would be based on whatever the different differences. Would provide a revenue stream and an appropriate budget. Uh, so it's just a matter of timing as to when you have it and then put all those requirements in the play. So that's probably the best.
Part of our requirements that if we don't have a budget by July one, the last year's, under state law, the last year's. Budget is the budget until we get a new budget, correct?
That's true, but that may not be what you want. Um, but that.
I understand that, but.
That would also take less time to action.
Uh, Na- Na- Nancy, if I may. You, you could, you could roll over last year's budget. But you can't collect any property taxes. So you can't collect any revenue. So you might have a budget, but you have no way to operate because you cannot.
Tax.
There, there's no way to tax people. You can't, there's no way to tax people. So we get a budget. No, the levy doesn't, the, uh, under state law, you can roll your budget over, but you cannot roll your levy over. So, and we don't keep that much money in our restricted general fund to be able to sort of. You know, there might be some towns out there that have, you know, that have five or seven months worth of revenue in their restricted general fu- fund. And they can manage. We have never been a town that's had a rainy day fund that's going to get us very far. So, um, I know we have a lot of raised hands here, so I see everybody, but I'm going to kind of go a little bit in order. Um, Solicitor Marcelo has his hand up.
Thank you. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that point. Um, the, the legal issue that all the municipalities are dealing with right now, and we're waiting for guidance from the General Assembly. If they do come back in session and we're waiting for governor's offers, whether the governor's o- o- office, whether, how they're going to weigh in this. But Chris is right, that the budget continues, but the levy does not. So the big issue is. What, what, under what circumstances can a community carry forth a budget when they don't have the ability to tax, to, to fund that budget? So one of the compromise, and again, this is at the thousand feet level. It doesn't really apply to everybody, but it's just. One of the compromises that some of the cities and towns have put. One of the compromises that some of the cities and towns are pushing for is exactly what Chris said, allow, allow the community. At their option, if they want to, it's not, not gonna be mandated, option. To continue their budget and the, this levy for, for one quarter, which will be ninety days. That will then give the communities some time to, and more importantly, the General Assembly sometime to put together. What they consider the fiscal year twenty-one budget will look like. Every city and town will have better ideas what those revenues and numbers and budgets, revenue sharing, car tax, education, look like. And then that will allow the cities and towns to then base their budgets. On the remaining nine months of the budget based upon that, that, that new revenue stream or whatever it is. And frankly. The way that people are talking, it's just really, it's about a twenty, I think they're kind of, Chris, correct, correct me if wrong, because Chris and I are on the same calls. You know, they, they're assuming about a twenty, twenty percent cut in revenues, and whether that. Whether that goes to the cities and towns, we just don't know what, what portion of that will go. But so that's, that's one of the options. There's no, there's absolutely no consideration in any level that I'm aware of. To, to get rid of F T Ms or an F T R, that's just. Everyone agreed that if it's in your charter, you've got to go forward with it. It's just an issue of when the deadlines that you, your charter currently states. How, how do you do that?
Counselor Edwards?
So I'll just be brief, because it seems like this seem, this is the, the theme of this evening, but it seems like we found just another example of a, of a, an I told you so from our last election.
So I, I do have, I do have one comment to make with regard to what Counselor Driggs said, which is that. I do not, I do not agree that the Budget Committee should have to go forward. With the budget that they have with revenue numbers that are essentially at this point. I, I, I mean, they're, they're, they're pointless. And I don't, I, I don't want to see the Budget Committee. Not have a level playing field, because I think if you force the Budget Committee to go forward in the, and. And not just in the absence of new numbers, but using the numbers that they got given back in, I don't know, I think they got them in the beginning of March or the end of February. When no one had any idea this pandemic was coming, that the only thing that that would do is give an enormous advantage. To somebody putting together a petitioner budget, who, you know, could essentially at least, you know, extrapolate down. That the revenues aren't gonna be that big, and then the Budget Committee would be stuck with. You know, a budget that wasn't worth the paper that it was written on. And so I don't believe that the Budget Committee. Who has the obligation under our charter essentially to put forward. The, the, the town-prepared budget. Should be handicapped in some way, and that they've got to use revenue numbers that came out way before this pandemic ever happened. I just don't think that that is at all fair to them. Chris, you had your hand up?
Just, just. That was my.
Sorry.
Just one clarifying point, so to, to put a little bit more emphasis on why. The pushing or deferring for a little while, is if the Budget Committee can make that guess, for lack of a better term. The issue boils down to how do they deal with the difference between what the municipal side of the budget is, or the town, what I always call the town side versus the school side? If they get that wrong, and the budget passes, our maintenance of effort will all fall on the town side if the legislature. Doesn't do a pro rata share on the cuts. So it's important to make sure that we have. The, the right information for the Budget Committee to know where those revenue streams are going to be short. So that they can make the appropriate adjustments when they do their vote for education and for the town side. So that we don't get harmed by doing it, very similar to what happened last year. And, and it was no fault of anybody as they went through the F T R process, the information that they had. They recommended a budget based on the numbers that the state gave them, only to have the state change them after the F T R. And we wound up having to fund the shortfall in that in this year's budget. So it'd be. I'd say imprudent to force the Budget Committee to do something without having the right information.
I just asked a question, because I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding something, but. Why is the Budget Committee locked into figures they had from March if the current figures right now are showing the estimates that are coming. Are going to be reduced revenues because of the COVID nineteen?
Don't have any, I mean, we know they're gonna be reduced, but we don't have an idea of what they're going to be reduced to, and to Chris's. But hang on a second, and to Chris's point that he just made, we don't really know when these. When, when whatever comes down from the state in terms of reductions, we don't know. Whether or not they're going to, whether or not the state's going to say, listen, you know, we're reducing you on the municipal side, but we're giving you your school stuff. Or reducing you on the school side, we're giving you, we don't know. And then we're stuck with a budget that may not map to. What the state is giving us or not giving us in terms of revenues. I mean, that was the point that Chris was just making. We don't really, we don't really know that.
But that's exactly what happened with, with the non-COVID year, that whatever they told us they were gonna do didn't turn out to be accurate. I mean, that's always a, that's always.
Except that, except that in this case, Nancy, it's twelve million dollars. I mean, it's, it, it's. It's hard for us when the state's numbers are, you know, they change our numbers by two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars or three-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars. That's like hard for us, but we get all up in our revenues between our school aid, our school housing aid, the library bond reimbursement. The casino revenue, our, our motor vehicle tech, everything. It's twelve million dollars. It's, it is a huge number. What?
Right.
So, I, I don't know. I, I mean, I just, that, I just think that that's such a huge number not to have. Any idea of what's being reduced and in which bucket it's being reduced in, whether it's on the municipal side or the school side. Or even on the library side, that I, I don't know where you go with that.
Madam President, could I just ask a question of the Town Clerk? One of the things that came up today. From the Governor's Office was the gathering. Now, I know that your budget process requires you to have a public hearing on a budget. And I don't, I, I don't have the history of the community, but Madam Clerk, when, what, based upon the current timeline, when would that have to?
I have that.
I don't have it in front of me, but I do have to say this. I have heard from the Board of Election sends us out information almost daily as well. It, you have to keep in mind, how would we have the public hearing? And how would we hold the F T R? And I'm for having the F T R, so. It, it's not from that point of view, but to hold an F T R on June twentieth and keep the distances. Some of the other communities that have F T R and F T M. They're going to proceed at a later time. However, they're doing this by mail ballot. When you do it by mail ballot, right now for the presidential preference, the state. Sends all those applications out, and it's still costing us an extra tooth grand or so on postage. But if we did an F T R basically on. Mail ballots and still had a poll location open, as we'll do for the presidential preference. You're talking about mailing those applications and then secondly ballots to thirteen thousand. Registered voters in Tiverton, because you have to send active and inactive. So that's a cost that I have not, number one, filtered into this current year's budget. Or into next year's budget. So that in itself is gonna be an issue.
Let me try to, Counsel, Counselor, I just wanted to, but, but, Chris, what, what is the date of the, the, the public hearing, if, if we keep the, if the twentieth is the date?
Public hearing will be on June seventh.
So we don't know basically whether on.
Earlier than that. Is that what I put on my chat, Chris? Is that what you're looking at?
I, I went by fourteen days. Prior to the June twentieth, right? Is that? Or thirteen?
June fourteenth. I mean, June.
June seventh.
We, we don't know.
The F T R was on the twentieth.
Six, June sixth.
How could I?
Hang on, hang on. This, let this solicit, please let Mike speak first.
I just, I just want to bring up, the, the, the legal question that we had, and we're waiting for guidance from too, is. Those communities that have F T Rs, F T Ms that have public hearings, who's gonna be able to sign off? On meetings of fifty or greater people, if the people, fifty or more people decide to show up at an F T R, F T M. We don't have any answer to that yet. We don't even know if those meetings are going to be allowed in the form that we are. So I'm just giving you the overlay. I want to make it very clear, no one is suggesting, and no one at the state level, no solicitor that I've talked to. Has indicated that the charter, any charter is going to be abandoned, and if it has an F T M or F T R, we're gonna go away with it. We can't. Let me, let me be very clear. Absent state legislation, there is no way that a community can get rid of its F T M or an F T R. So that's not going to happen. And there are communities, including Tiverton, who have made it very clear on these calls, that they want to go forward with their F T M and F T Rs. It's a question of timing. So I, I, let me just be, let me say that once, once again, there are communities, including Tiverton. Who have made it very clear to the state that they want to go forward with their F T R, F T M. It is a question solely of timing based upon guidance from the Department of Health, based upon lack of guidance from the state regarding the health, the revenue estimates. And those issues that are, 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 are perhaps suggesting that they have to be delayed. Perhaps for, for ninety days, if we can get this other solution by carrying a levy. Though I have to say, I just want to make that very, very clear.
Correct.
So I think with that is that up, okay, Nancy, and then, I, I mean, if you don't have a motion here, this was just sort of an update from Chris, so go ahead.
Okay, I just have one question for Chris. In his update, just of his town council week, I noticed you. You made some comment that you'd had a meeting and you figured out how to do. Bryce, how to do a public hearing type thing. What, what was that all about? Like, would that cover the, would that cover the financial town referendum hearing?
It, the, the issue that we're gonna have with that, and it's a Zoom meeting, it's a, the enterprise version of Zoom. We still haven't got the product in-house. We signed up for it today. We believe we can do a large public hearing. The problem is validating, as the canvassing would be, is how do you know? And, and validate who the voter is in those, in those meetings. So that's a problem. And, and it hasn't been resolved yet. So you, you, you have to be a registered voter to vote, and to do it by a Zoom meeting is going to be difficult to validate who's actually on the other end.
And, and it may also be a legal problem, because some people may not have access to the technology. Not everybody has a laptop, a screen, a computer, and whatever, it's hard to believe, but it is true. There are some people, there are concerns that some people may be disenfranchised from that process. So there are a lot, this, there's, it, it's amazing, but there are a lot of unanswered questions that we are all waiting to get some guidance on, but I. And I applaud the Town Administrator for bringing this up. We've been dealing with this for the last six weeks. But again, I just want to be clear, this is, these are just issues and no final decisions that, I don't, I don't make a decision, but no, no final decisions have been made. But I just want everyone to be aware that there are legitimate issues, both logistics, legally and informationally. That the town has to deal with as they go forward with the process.
And I, and I think there's a little bit, the Budget Committee has a little bit of time, and I know Chris goes on the finance calls. I, I'm not, is there another one this week?
There's two this week. There's one tomorrow.
So, you know, at, at some point coming out of this, Chris may be getting some more information from us that will help us go forward. But. So should we move on to our next item on, under?
These are more informational than they are, just so that, you know, trying to bring up the speed on where we are in certain aspects of what's going on. The senior center, I mean, they, there was a request from a number of different people wanting to know where we were. They, we did do the roof. We did do the siding on the back of the building. They did do the water line, and they put in some handicap parking signs, I believe. I know the director would like to move forward and do the other two sides of the building. She actually has preserved some money because they really have been using the bus account. But I told her. Well, I would like to do it as well too, until we get some better handling on where we are financially, that it may be deferred till next year. And I applaud her for everything that she's done as far as savings, and I would love to have that building, you know, cleaned up on all sides of it. As, as, as I think you're, you've all demonstrated in your capital budget planning of trying to bring these buildings up to speed. So she's done a fabulous job. D P W has worked very hard at trying to bring that facility up to speed. They've completed as best they can with the monies that they had this year. If she was to do the furtherance of it, it would be taking money from another account right now that we may need further down the road. So I just wanted to bring up the speed with that one. I don't know if anybody has any questions about it.
Um, this is Donna. I've, I've, I've been over there quite a few times, and it looks really nice.
I'm sure.
The color that was picked looks just very well done. Yeah.
So the next one was the. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. Town road paving. Rick gave me a breakdown on the paving, the, the, the two areas of town that we're doing, the, what was up behind what I would call C V S area. They've done a number of roads up there. They've done, they, they ripped them apart, they put the base down, and they put the finish coats on them. And there are a couple down behind the Riverdale nursing home there, three roads down there. He expects to spend all the paving monies, except for about twenty thousand dollars that they need in reserve to do the. The looming along the sides of the paving, once the, the ground settles, they'll go back and put the loom down and seat it over. But they fully expect to use all the paving money that was allocated this year. So that should be pretty close to update on that. The recreational parking areas. And again, this was, I know we've had some contention about whether or not we should, you know. Deal with the, you know, the beaches being open, closed and, and whatnot, but we did have some signage put up. The police have been doing a very good job of monitoring it. They, we have tried to ask them not to ticket anybody at this point until it gets to be difficult, and we believe. As the weather gets warmer, it will get more difficult. There'll be more and more people coming. But I will say the same token, as the calls have been coming, the governor is looking, and, and both, all three governors. Connecticut, Mass, and Rhode Island are looking at a methodology of trying to open up some of these beaches, and, and I'm saying this week or next. It would probably be in about three weeks to four weeks, and it would be a slow migration of. Where some of the other states have done of opening up beaches for a very limited purpose. And then expanding the use as the, the positive counts go down. So. We've done a fairly good job of trying to maintain that. I will say that, you know. This past weekend, I did go through Grinnell's quite a bit myself. It, it wasn't as difficult or as bad as this weekend with the mass places it had been in the past. But I still expect that we'll be getting them coming, coming through. So. So I don't know if there's any other questions as it relates to the recreational parking areas.
I have one question. I know that Fogland's a little harder to control, and I, I have gotten some complaints and comments about, you know, about Fogland, and I know it's tougher, but. One of the things that I was asked by somebody who is actually an epidemiologist who lives here in Tiverton. And is whether or not people visiting at least some of our recreation areas should be wearing masks. And I hadn't really thought about it. Apparently, the city of Newport is now requiring you to wear a mask if you visit Cliff Walk. So I, I don't know, I'm not really sure if the Governor's Office has a guideline on that, but it's.
I am.
Just a question.
This is Chris again. I'll, I'll, I, I did contact the Department of Health today. Because I did receive a number of complaints from constituents that they had gone into some of the retail outlets, like Tom's and. There were two other places that they had. uh, there were two other places that they had gone into that, when they went in there, other people, the staff were wearing them, but can, you know, the public were not wearing them. And whether or not it was requirement, so I went and looked at the governor's order and the order is, uh, strict in that it, uh, the, the, the business owners and their employees are required to wear them, but there's no mention of, uh, the public that has to wear them. So I reached out to the Department of Health and I asked the same question, was there any guidance on it? And they said, no, there really isn't any, uh, but they, it didn't preclude the business owners from making their own uh, mandates, kind of like no shirt, no shoes, no service, you know, they could do the same with no, you know, no shirt, no shoes, no mask, no, no nothing. Um, they, you know, they, they could set their own policy, that's what it is, but I don't know how you would do it outside, I can, you know, I can see where the Cliff Walk is, a very narrow area at points where people can get really close. Uh, but, you know, it, it wouldn't preclude us from saying that we, you know, if you're going to be outside, you should be wearing uh, a mask. I, I, I would like to see if there, I, I know East Province put something together. If we could take a look at theirs and maybe craft some more that's to give the business owners some leeway on something that they could craft or do on their own.
I actually did have a business owner speak to me, um, because they said Saturday was very busy for them. And of course, all their staff is wearing masks, but the customers weren't. And they weren't so much, to be honest, I mean, they are worried about the customers, not really, but they're much more worried about their staff because they're all wearing masks, but all day long, they were exposed to a lot of people who weren't. And, you know, a lot of the staff was uncomfortable with that. They have a sign on the door that, that sort of, you know, it's like a please, wear a mask, but they actually said, can we tell people they have to? Um, because they, 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 the staff felt like they were kind of at risk and I, did you, Mike, do you have something in East Providence?
We do, so we do have, uh, the American Senate Executive Order indicating that, uh, you had to, both the employees and the customers had to wear a mask. Uh, Barrington has the same, uh, a similar one. And it, 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 you know, it, we're not, they're not ticketing people, but we, we asked that this, it just, the business owners, uh, who approached the administration in East Providence indicated they felt it would be helpful. So they have something to rely upon when they told the customer, you know, we're not going to serve you because, you know, you're violating an executive order or anything like that. So, um, that's something I, I started the draft today, actually, um, at the request of the town administrator to look into it. So, so it's something that you can, we can certainly consider doing if you want, it would be an executive order, uh.
So I, I drove by Grace and they, they have a long line, it was very well thought out, it was very well socially distanced, but nobody was wearing masks, they came up with a counter. And those employees on the other side probably feel, you know, they, they, because you're pretty close when you get to that window. So, you know, maybe we should do something. I don't know.
Or maybe at least call some of the, oh, go ahead Denise.
There are some businesses in town with signs on the door that said, no, that says you cannot enter without a mask. I saw it this, I saw it at two places today. Um, but also keep in mind, those masks only protect the people you come in contact with. So it doesn't protect you. So they have every right to be concerned if people are coming in without masks. Because the employees are only protecting their customers, but they're not being protected.
Right, right.
Nancy?
But there are some businesses that did.
Well, hang on, let, let Denise just finish and then, um, go ahead Denise. Did you want to finish?
But there are some businesses that, that did do it, so I think the business owners have every right to put that on their door. That's it.
Okay, Nancy?
Yeah, I would, I was going to say just what Denise just said, I'm not a nurse, but I, I do understand that, um, my wearing a mask just protects the other person in case I cough or sneeze or something, but it doesn't protect me from somebody else. That being said, I do go walking in Fodlands and I'm not near anybody and I do not wear a mask. And I don't intend to wear a mask out in the open, walking along a beach where there's absolutely no one nearby.
Well, at the very least, maybe we can either look at in ordnance or make it clear to the businesses that they have the, they can enforce that if they so choose. Maybe some of them aren't really sure because it's been kind of so fuzzy back and forth. Um,
And then.
Unless there's anything else on beach and recreation, um, Chris, last of all, you, do you have any other COVID-19 updates and?
That, that, you know, I am in continual contact with both these because they, their frontline people are being exposed in, day in, day out with what's going on. So we're ensuring that they're doing all the appropriate protocols to make sure that their, their temperatures are taken every day, they, they, um, you know, if they have any symptoms, we require that they go out and get it. Right now, I know we've had those with some people being out tested, but they're all back, we don't have any issues with those right now. Uh, biggest issue, and to get the appropriate PPE for their first responders. Uh, they are getting deliveries, but the, the, the appropriate masks are not, have not come in. Uh, FEMA has been doing a very good job of scheduling a couple of deliveries every, uh, every two weeks. And, uh, we are trying to source some things on our own. Um, uh, the, uh, and all of our people who thought that they had symptoms are all back to work now currently. So every, everybody's working, you know, with, with, uh, with everything, we're just trying to make sure we get the right PPE for the first responders.
Excellent. Um, so Solicitor Marcello, you have your hand up? No, you're muted and no hand up, okay. All right, um, let's see.
Go get Fallon.
I'm going to unmute Stu here. Uh, because we invited Stu to join us, oops, where, oh, Stu, there you are.
Everybody.
So I, um, we've amended our agenda to invite Stu Gilfillan, who is the Chair of the Recreation Committee and also Chair of the Town Farm Renovation Committee, uh, just to officially share some news with us, so I'll hand it over to Stu.
Thank you. Um, I will be brief, um, but I'm very pleased to announce that we received notice this week that we had received a grant, um, from the Rhode Island DEM for a total of $375,000 to put towards Town Farm renovations and that includes a new playground, also includes a outdoor fitness workout area and six pickleball courts. So, um, really, really pleased with this outcome, obviously. Um, it was a 82-page grant and I think probably the most notable piece in there was that, uh, there were 15 letters of support from national and local organizations, so, um, supported at all different levels. Um, I do want to give a quick shout out to our committee, uh, Adam Raposa, Chris Romline, Dan Bosal, Dave Paul, Deb Palish, Josh Caroa, uh, Jen Oser, Catherine Hopkins and the ex-officio members, uh, DPW Director Rick Rogers and also former town administrator Jan Ritzma. Um, we wouldn't be where we are right now without them. Um, I also do want to thank a few other people that let me pester them pretty repeatedly for feedback, um, and that would be Council President Hilton, um, Councillor Perry and, uh, Police Chief Jones. So I, I can't thank you guys enough for where we are. I know the committee is really excited, uh, we took about two days to catch our breath and now we're shifting gears into fundraising because we have a 20% match and then some to, uh, to bring in. I did want to mention that going forward, we'll also have a website, uh, you can check it out, it's recreate townfarm.org. Uh, we'll be adding more content to it and, um, hopefully being able to collect donations on there, um, in the future. But the reality is, there's a big, big lift to get to this point and really grateful for the, uh, the energy and the commitment of a lot of people and the support of the town council. So, thank you to everyone who's involved.
Well, I just want to say thank you and congratulations to Stu and his committee on what a great job. And I know they, um, put together an incredible grant application and had, uh, just a ton of backup and did a ton of research and especially, you know, sort of right now where, um, there's not a lot of great news, it's really just incredible that you guys were able to, um, to, uh, receive this grant from DEM and I know everybody is really excited about, um, our new the center and our pickleball courts, um, down at Town Farm. And I did mention earlier that we had some public comment and as it turns out, the public comment is a letter of congratulations and appreciation uh, to the Town Farm Recreation Committee on receiving this grant from Carolyn Richard Gemon. So, um, you're already getting fan mail, uh, so that is great, but really, uh, totally job well done, way to go, you guys. And, uh, awesome shout out to your entire committee.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, thank you very much for, uh, letting me share the news.
Yep, Stu, great job, Stu, you and your committee.
Thanks, guys. Bye, everybody.
Bye, Stu, thanks. Uh, now this brings us up to the Solicitor Marcello portion of tonight's, tonight's meeting. So I'll, I'll turn it over to this.
I did wear a tie today, so that's, we're getting back to normality. Um, briefly, um, uh, I, the, 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 um, the case of Mr. McLaughlin versus the town of Tiverton was being defended by the Rhode Island Local Interlocal Trust. Uh, the case, uh, was pending in the United States Federal District Court for the District of Rhode Island. Uh, the court granted, uh, the town's, uh, motion for summary judgment and denied the, uh, Mr. McLaughlin's motion for summary judgment, which basically effectively means that every, everybody agreed as to the facts of the case. The, therefore, there was no need for any type of jury trial, but the, um, and the, the court applied the law to the facts and basically the court said, given the facts as we know them and the law as it is, um, the, the, the town, uh, the town would prevail and therefore judgment entered on behalf of the town and against the plaintiff, so the town basically won the suit. Um, however, as you may know, the United States District Court, the District of Rhode Island is a lower court and, um, the McLaughlins had a right to appeal and they had 30 days to appeal, uh, that decision and they would appeal to the First Circuit Court of Appeals in the, in Boston. And, uh, I think on the last day or maybe the next to last day when the appeal period was, uh, going to run, we got notice that the, in fact, appeal has been filed. So now the case can go up to the, uh, First Circuit and, and they will determine, um, whether the lower court got it right. Um, so it's, 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 it's not, it's not a retrial of the whole case, but it's basically the reviewing of the, the decision of the, the trial judge, whether or not they got it right or not. So there'll be more, there'll probably be more to say about that, uh, in a, in a future, because, um, uh, I know the trust, we, town council, trust lawyer, so, so, does there any, any questions on that? No, I think the decision, uh, was included in your packet, that was a lower court decision. Uh, the next item is the, uh, open meetings complaint, uh, uh, filed against the town council on, uh, uh, by Ms. Cook. Um, so, uh, we, we did get a, a verdict, not a verdict, but a decision from the, uh, uh, around Attorney General that based upon the facts is alleged that there was no violation of the, uh, Open Meetings Act and therefore, um, there was no findings of any violation and therefore, uh, the town prevailed on that matter as well. And again, I included that decision in your packet, that concludes that matter. Uh, third is a, a, a complaint filed by Mr. Justin Cadsworth against the Tiverton Library Board of Trustees. Uh, this originally came to me, uh, through the Attorney General's office because they assumed that I was the attorney for the library. I'm speaking with our most knowledgeable town clerk, she informed me that the library generally hires, had in the past hired their own counsel. And, um, before entering an appearance or taking, you know, spending the town's funds on that case, I did speak to the clerk and the town administrator, and my understanding is that that's now being defended, uh, by the library, they have their own counsel, so I will not be defending that case. Um, and the fourth item is, uh, just to let the council know that we did fi, uh, get a final signed, uh, separation agreement with, uh, the, uh, former town administrator uh, on the terms and conditions, uh, with the council had voted for, uh, an executive session, so that now is finalized. Uh, and, uh, we can now disclose, I, I think we have previously disclosed the vote, but now just, just letting you know that the, the, the agreement is now finalized and that case is over. Uh, not, not that the case is over, but the separation is now final and, um, we're just moving forward, obviously. And, uh, the same thing with the William Monroe, uh, that termination agreement has also been signed, uh, with the, for, we're all set with that as well. On, on the terms and conditions as voted for by the town council. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Solicitor Marcello. Uh, last but certainly not least, Madam Clerk.
Yes, so, um, the first one on the financial town referendum, I think we've spoke to that enough. And, um, I just want to let you know that I've got to proceed by the dates that the charter requires I do. Therefore, I'm already going to be advertising for final dates to register and whatnot. I, I do have to say that I'm anxiously awaiting the same kind of information from the state because I don't know how we'd be able to get through the public hearings and whatnot. But on, on a second issue, which is the presidential preference primary. Now, there's been a, there's been a lot of calls coming into the town hall. I'm not sure everyone understands what a presidential preference primary is. And, and they're somehow confusing it with the town elections. This is strictly to vote for who you prefer to be president. And you, it, you have, there are two ballots, you have to vote Republican or Democrat. There is no such thing as an unaffiliated ballot in this case. So the State of Rhode Island Board of Election has sent out applications to all 13,400 eligible voters in the town of Tiverton, they've sent across the state. So, it's now in the process of people received it. And, and it's a privilege to vote, you can vote, you can send it back and get a real ballot, you can, but there will only be one polling location on that day. It is June 2nd. On a Tuesday, it will be the Tiverton High School Gymnasium. There will be restrictions on it. You will have to keep the distance apart, we'll, we're really struggling to get poll workers and, and people we need. It's also creating a lot of work in the clerk's office because those applications that you received, there's a, um, postage paid envelope, it gets returned to the Board of Election. Then the Board of Election will download the ones for Tiverton to us. We also already got 600 pieces of return mail because they will not deliver to post offices. So we're going to be very active on our end. But there's been a lot of apprehension about wanting to vote or not wanting to vote by mail. I can only tell you that is how the state has decided to run this election, so it is primary by mail. But we will have one polling location. And the last day to register to vote will be on, um, May 3rd, which is a Sunday. And it will be between 1:00 and 4:00 at the Tiverton Police Station. That's where we have held that in the past. So if you have any questions, I know it's confusing, some people don't realize what party affiliation they're with. Just call the clerk's office. The girls in there have been very patient, they try to explain what's going on. So you can call the clerk's office, we will try to help you. The final canvas is going to be on May 4th, meaning the day after the last day to register to vote. We will have to put on the website, that is what the Board of Election has suggested we do, the entire canvas in case anybody chooses to object. So other than that, all I can tell you is you'll have to call the clerk's office and with any questions and we'll try to help you the best we can.
Question, Joe Perry.
Yes.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay. Do you have to disaffiliate once you declare which primary you're, you're running in or?
50% of the state's voters are considered unaffiliated. But in order to vote on a presidential preference, you have to declare, you have to choose one or the other. But in order to vote on a presidential preference, you have to declare, you have to choose one or the other. Once you have voted, there will be a table there with a poll worker and a, a stack of disaffiliation forms. You can then disaffiliate.
Right, but if you're mailing it in, how do you do that?
You just fill out the form, right? You can fill it out right there or you can come to the town hall and fill out a form, but they are available there during the election. Now you have to remember that Financial Town Referendum, which will be our next election, you don't have to declare one way or another, it's general. But when the primary comes up in September, you again are going to have to declare. But the general election, you don't. So anytime you declare, you become a member of that party until you disaffiliate. So choose to disaffiliate.
Yeah, the question I had Nancy was, if, if you're, if you're mailing it in and you, you know, you're doing an absentee, how do you disaffiliate? You have to go get the form to disaffiliate, correct?
Right, if you're mailing in the ballot and you're not going to the poll, we'll have to come to the town hall or give us a call because it's all signature. And all the signatures are scanned into the system. So call town hall, we'll get you one.
Yeah, that's what I want to know because people have been asking me that, that's what I was, that's what I was asking.
Nancy, if people go to the poll for unaffiliated, that at the time they vote, they could just say Democrat or Republican and then file the disaffiliation thing again?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If you are an unaffiliated registered voter, then you can vote either one and you can make that decision when you go to the poll. However, a lot of people don't understand is they might have voted in a different primary and they now are affiliated. You cannot come to me and say I'm a Republican if the last time you voted Democrat.
Right.
You can vote provisional, but it's not going to count. If our records show that you did not disaffiliate, you voted in a primary, you must take that ballot. And, you know, there has been some talk on, and there's been some comments on Facebook. If you know of someone that is on that list or you received mail from someone, contact the clerk's office. We cannot remove anyone from a voter list without proper documentation. I mean, we're getting calls, this person is deceased. Well, we don't know you deceased, that person is deceased. Someone's got to come in with a death certificate and indicate to us that. So there, you can help when you, instead of, you know, worrying about, yes, I got a, I got a an application for somebody, my daughter who doesn't live here. Well, no, but you've been accepting their mail all this time, so we don't know your daughter doesn't live there. So, you know, people themselves have to help to clean up these rolls. I cannot, we don't know every single person and where they moved to. So that I just want to let it know that this is statewide. If you went, if you do choose to go to the poll, which is your, to do, there will be guns there, we'll ask that you wear a mask, we'll keep distance, distance in between. It will be a slower process, we'll be wiping down the polling booths in between. We're going to take every precaution that the Board of Election directs us to do.
Great, thank you, Madam Clerk. Unless anybody has anything else, I'd need a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Okay, can we do this one by a hand raised there, Solicitor Marcelo?
As long as the clerk gets the number.
Okay, everybody say aye, all in favor, aye? Are there any nays? Aye, 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 I didn't think so. I just do want to say one thing and thank the council very quickly. Our agenda was pretty long tonight and the Zoom thing is not easy and we're not used to it. And we have to take all these roll call votes and everything else. And I was really fearful we were going to be here a lot longer than we were. So I would just like to thank the rest of the council and everybody for being so patient and working so hard on the Zoom thing as well as our Solicitor and Town Administrator and Town Clerk.
We'll be 10 o'clock.
We, because even, even bumbling through this technology, we still be 10 o'clock, so that's not a bad thing.
And Council President, just so, as, as the clerk has indicated, next formal meeting will be a public hearing where people will be able to participate by Zoom or by mail or by phone, so please follow the agenda very carefully if you want to participate as a member of the public, that'll be the first time that we're having public participation in a public hearing.
It is, and just as a heads up to the council, because of that and because of the technical difficulties involved, we're probably not going to make the agenda too big because it may take us a while to get our, our footing as we work through that process.
We have four public hearings that day.
Oh, we have four.
Tiverton has led the charge in the Zoom meetings, we're one of the first communities to do it, so.
You are, we're, we're, we are way ahead on this, we're either doing really well or we're way out of our skis.
Commended for that or criticized?
Anyways, all right, I think the ayes have it, so we're adjourned, good night, thank you, everybody.
Stay safe, everybody.
Thank you.